Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. This meeting takes place in the traditional and ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. We are all treaty people. Additions, deletions to the agenda, we do have one small addition. We have some communication that will add to presentations for Paul. Is everyone somewhat ready to make that motion with that addition? Moved by Counselor Fullerton, seconded by Deputy Mayor. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Approval of the agenda, recommendation that Committee of the Whole approve the agenda for the October 7th, 2025 meeting is presented. So move, seconded, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried. Approval of the minutes, recommendation that Committee of the Whole approve the minutes from the September 2nd, 2025 meeting is presented. Is there a mover? Moved by Counselor Strong, seconded by Counselor Greek. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carried. There is one correspondence there for information from Paula Rennie about live streaming and recording of meetings. Pardon? And you, yeah, okay, sorry, I skipped presentation. I wrote it down upfront and right there, so Paul has a presentation to make.
Thank you, your worship. So Counsel, Mayor, Counsel and Staff, this letter is from Kelly Jardine. So it's based on her retirement, September 29th, 2025. So, and this is from her hand, so please give me a second here. So I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everyone for almost 30 years of employment with the town of Lunenburg as administrative assistant for the mayor and the CIO. I had the privilege to work under the long-serving mayor Mahini, please say if I'm saying that wrong, Mayor Bailey, and the first, the town's first female mayor, Mayor Myra, a long-serving counselor and many, many counselors. All were professional, kind and thoughtful, and always looked, and always took time to get to know me and each and every one of us and our families. It was much appreciated by all. I also have the privilege of working with Bea Retton, the long-serving CIO, who I learned so much from and am forever grateful. I also worked with Jamie Doyle for a short period. To my colleagues that I have had the privilege of working for over the years, a big thank you. We worked together, built relationships and supported each other. Thank you again for the experiences and professional growth. Working for and in the town of Lunenburg was an opportunity for both my husband and I. We are both forever grateful to have, have the opportunity to work with wonderful, with the wonderful town and raise our children in this area. The next chapter is exciting and I look forward to it. Good luck and good health to everyone who are part of the town of Lunenburg team. I have one request for everyone. In the world where you can please be kind and anything be kind. Thanks, everyone. Kelly Jardine.
Thank you, Paul. I'd just like to add Kelly was here for the 12 years I was on council previously, and she was here for a few short months when I was elected as mayor. And she was sort of my go-to the short time she was here when I was here. And again, I can't say enough about Kelly. She was a great asset to the community, a great asset to the town. And whenever any of us needed anything, she was there. And, you know, quite honestly, it was a big loss down below when she left because it definitely left the hole. Because as, as people might not be aware, in a small town like this, we don't have EA's or ED's or anything. We really have to go to staff for certain things. And she was, that's what she was really for, the mayor. And for council, she was sort of our right hand when we needed anything. So again, on behalf of the town of Lunenburg and its citizens, I'd like to thank Kelly for all her year's service. And I hope she enjoys her well-earned retirement. So thank you very much, Paul. So now we'll move on to correspondence. And there is one item from Paula Rennie, live streaming and recording of meetings, and that we'll be talking about later on in the meeting. There is no business arising in unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. There's an information report there, Town and Water Utility Capital Upgrade Status. Tyson?
Thank you, your worship. Good evening, everyone. This evening, prepared a report to provide counsel with an update on the capital budget items for the town budget and the water utility. Categorize projects between completed, projects in progress, projects in preliminary stages and projects facing possible deferral or postponement within the report. So rather than go through them all, they're all, they're all listed there and there's some photographs as well. So if there are questions about specific projects, or if it's just for council's information, happy either way.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Tyson? Counselor Strong?
I did notice that the town hall roof repairs was tendered. And do we have any idea when in the fall of 2025?
Through the chair, you're talking about for a start date? It, it looks likely to be later in October. And then should be completed based on the, the planned schedule, late November or early December.
Any other questions? I'd just like to say one thing on the flashing beacon lights. If there's something that we've done in the last couple of years in the community that we've really got a lot of great positive feedback for, it's those flashing beacon crosswalk lights. I'm not sure how we can, I guess, educate more people to use them. They're there for that purpose. And some people just don't use them. But again, they're a great asset. A lot of people are very impressed. And I know they're a lot more expensive than they were two years ago. But I think every year at Budget Time, we should look at if one or two of them, if, you know, and put them in other areas. But again, I want to thank staff for getting them up and, and getting them functioning because they are a great asset to have within the community. Thank you. Deputy?
Thanks, your worship. And just mention, it's great to see so many things coming together. It's nice to see progress being made and, and jobs getting completed. And especially pleased about the, the work being done on the wastewater treatment plant and the progress that's being made there is, is really encouraging. But I did, I did want to ask a question about the Academy Roof Repair Tender Work. And it's, it states that we would look to put the tender out in early 2026. And I'm wondering if there's, in your professional opinion, if there's any advantage to doing it even sooner than that? Knowing that the, the timing of tendering, it can be very important. And if there would be any advantage in doing that?
Through the chair. So the, the consultant at the moment is working on that, that reduced scope that we talked about when we, we did that initial review of the, the full roof replacement. So it may depend on the timing of that. Whether, whether, not sure exactly when we're planning on rolling the capital budget out, but whether it was something council wanted to, to pre-approve potentially. We could look at it that way. Early in the year seems like a good time. So again, how that fits in the, in the jigsaw puzzle of it all. I think that's a good aim, though.
Thank you. Counselor Strong?
I really do appreciate being able to see this like this. And it really does give me an excellent idea on how much work is being done in the town. And I was wondering if we could get something communicated to the public about certain things that I'm hearing questions on, which is the bandstand restoration. And, you know, the bandstand restoration seems to be the big one. The status, when it's going to be opened by or anything like that. A piece has blown down, a piece of the plastic, and it's exposed it a little bit. And it's, it's gaining a lot of momentum, of excitement in the town, so.
Through the chair, so the work is progressing. Based on the, the latest schedule for the contractor, it looks, the, the plan completion date is just, just before Remembrance Day. But we are doing, or the contractor is performing a lot of finished tasks at the moment, like painting, which we've had ideal weather for that till now. If we get into more wet weather, then maybe that impacts it. But I, I think next week, they'll get into placing the structural steel. That's the plan. And it'll be a lot more visible because those tars will be removed. The tars were there for the, the sandblasting and the painting of the columns. So then it, it may answer some of those questions and people will be able to keep track of the progress themselves.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Tyson. We're going to move on to an information report and request for direction with live streaming and recording meetings. Kayla?
Thank you. So back in August, council directed staff to prepare a report looking at our current practices for live streaming and archiving meetings on YouTube, along with some recommendations, and then a scan of what other municipalities are doing. So as you know, in practice, we currently live stream and publish recordings of council and committee of the whole meetings. And occasionally, we've livestreamed and published recordings of committee meetings or public participation meetings, but it's not the norm. It's staff recommendation that only council and committee of the whole meetings continue to be livestreamed and shared on YouTube. These are the meetings where decisions are happening and elected officials are debating. So this is really where those decisions are being made that affect the community. Advisory committees, on the other hand, they don't make decisions. They make recommendations that then come forward to council. These committees include resident volunteers who don't necessarily work in local government or aren't required to have technical expertise. Their role is to ask questions, explore ideas, and I guess for lack of a better word, get a little messy to try to understand what's being put before them so they can make the most informed recommendation to council. So we want to make that environment as comfortable as possible, a space where people can ask questions, make mistakes without worrying that those will be archived forever on YouTube. Public participation meetings are a big thing that we're hearing a lot of lately as we're doing more of them. These meetings are truly about creating a space for people to show up and share their thoughts on planning proposals early in that process. We've actually heard from residents that they're not always comfortable showing up and presenting at these meetings because they're being livestreamed and archived on YouTube. So while there are different avenues to explore for meaningful public participation engagement, we think this is a step in the right direction to provide that. And that being said, all this input and advisory committee meetings, that still comes forward to council and staff reports or in minutes from advisory committees. So there's still a public record of what happens there. From an accommodation perspective, we always offer that. So if you wanted to attend a public participation meeting but couldn't, and participate in it, but you couldn't physically be in the room, you can always make a staff, like a request to staff, and we can definitely accommodate that. There's also, you can submit written feedback, or you could set up a timed staff. So this report, as it says in there, has also been reviewed by our accessibility coordinator and our EDI coordinator, who support these recommendations on a whole. There's also a little table in there, jurisdictional scan. Several municipalities take a similar approach. So live streaming council and committee of the whole style meetings and predominantly not advisory or PPMs, the odd, like, police advisory committee here and there. So basically, that's the report in a nutshell. We're looking on council's direction. If you could go through those recommendations and if you agree, if you disagree, or you want to see something different, that will allow us to start hashing out a policy so we're all on the same page going forward on this. Happy to answer any questions or provide clarity.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Counsel? Deputy Mayor?
So there may, there are, or will maybe, policies, other policies that would require updating to reflect whatever is decided through the direction that we're given here, that would be given here, yes?
Yes. So our intent is we would capture this all in one kind of policy. And speaking with Paul, we think that's the most straightforward. That being said, there are some terms of references that reference live streaming. The procedural policy of council is where it currently says committee of the whole and council meetings are livestreamed and recorded. But pretty much that's it. So again, having one policy and that may supersede other ones until we get forward and update them.
Any other questions? Counselor Strong?
Just a comment rather than any question, but I'm really, really happy that this was run by the Accessibility and Anti-Racism and Diversity Coordinators because I, there are things that I've been thinking about all along. And I think something that really speaks to me is that people do feel barriers. We may not experience it in our day-to-day life, but this one line really hits home. Peoples that are less confident, marginalized or unsure of the details would be, I've had it, I've heard it from the public that they're uncomfortable speaking. And so I think that it's, it's just really good that you've gone to them and gotten sanctioned.
Anybody else? I'd just like to say that I think the report was great. It showed us what, you know, why we are doing what we're doing. I think we're going to be livestreaming the meetings that we're like, people actually, there's, there's interest there from the community. And there's not public participation sitting around this table for the most part because they don't sign up for the, sometimes the rhetoric or the abuse or whatever it is we get sometimes here. We know when we put our name on a ballot, that might come. But regular Joe that wants to be a volunteer for the community and do something good and serve on a committee doesn't sign up for that. And if you look at the 12 or 13 municipalities that we've researched, we're actually doing, going above and beyond more than, I think, eight of them are, or seven of them. So I mean, we are definitely being open and transparent. The one thing I will say moving forward for all meetings, whether it's livestreamed or in public, is we have to sooner rather than later look at ways that we can hear people better in this room. Because that, we've heard for six months now and it's the same. So I don't know, I mean, people can hear me because I'm loud, right? At least, right? So, but there are a few, a few people that people can't hear. And I don't know if it's because the mic isn't close enough, or they're not speaking into the mic loud enough and that. And then we have public presenters, the same. So maybe even, like, we had a meeting today and you had a headset. So maybe even headsets would help because then the mic is right here. But there seems to be, no matter how good a meeting goes at the end of the night, we always have complaints from people that they couldn't hear half of it. So that's something we have to look at. I know that's not part of this policy, but it is a problem that we hear time and time again.
So through you, Chair, at the attending of the AMNS conference, there was actually a really good system that I want to discuss with staff that would actually enhance both the microphones, the ability for counselors to hear, but also how we can set this room up with some additional cameras, something that focuses on, on everybody instead of the one lens you see now. So I, I think there's opportunity, this will actually be a budget consideration, so. But they're willing to come down and demo it. They're based out of Halifax. So there's, there's opportunities here where we can see and see how it can function and change the, the, the communication level in this room.
Excellent. Thank you. Because that just seems to be a steady complaint, so. So is there any other questions on the report? Counselor Babino?
Again, not, not really a question, just comment. I love the staff report. It kind of has everything in here that I would want to see to provide further direction or anything like that. I support all of these recommendations, for sure. I like, I'm just wondering if there's a way we can sort of promote to the public at some point, the, which I know is an existing practice, but their ability to request, like, virtually attending a meeting, even if it's not one normally? Because I, I'm not sure that people are necessarily aware of that, but I think that they should be.
Yeah, I agree. Because for the PPM on Wednesday, I think you're going to have a lot of people here. So my intention was to sit home and watch the meeting on my computer because I'm going to hear the reports anyways and hear everything. So I thought sitting home and watching, can I, but it's not livestreamed at all. They're then left to come. Because I think you're going to, that could be an issue for that meeting because there's going to be a lot of people here.
And so that's where it goes versus live streaming and observing what people are saying versus participation. So if we look at the name, public participation, that's why we have in those PPM ads. If you would like to virtually participate, let us know the day before. You have up until October 14th, we'll have you on a list. So we still have the capacity. It's not being necessarily livestreamed or archived on YouTube, but people could still join the meeting. So we've done that before in like, public advisory committee, or public planning advisory committees where a member couldn't make it, they're away, but they really wanted to be there. We have the technology to do that. So if you truly, truly have something you want to say, you can still participate virtually. It's just not being observed virtually. It's participating virtually. You can't observe.
Okay.
Unless you come in person.
Thanks. Okay, if there's nothing else, do we want to send this back for staff to come back with a, a, you know, a report, a final report that we can approve by law changes or policy changes?
I, I guess, yeah, I'm looking for what direction you need specifically, since we're not the decision-making body. Do we need to recommend this come to, to council as, as?
Yeah, just to keep it streamlined and make sure the direction is clear. If committee of the whole wanted to provide direction on a policy based on the recommendations and the staff report, that would allow us to bring it forward again. Based on everything that's here, we'll just have it in policy format.
So based on, on the information provided in the staff report, I would recommend that, that staff prepare a, a policy statement for an upcoming council meeting?
So moves, there a second there? Seconded by Counselor Babino. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Kayla. Now we're moving on to 9.3, information report. Paul for moratoriums on development. Paul?
Thank you, Chair. So Counsel, this has come about as questions as to can we stop developments within our community while you want to look at changes to the LUB, the MPS, or, or other bylaws within this? So I did get legal advice on this. The answer is no. You do have policies and bylaws in place to allow for development and to allow for process. There are ways to control and you can slow process down within it. You can look at development agreements or development processes under the MGA. But in essence, you cannot actually put a moratorium on development. But however, and I'll note this is in your motion action list for staff to bring forward changes and recommendations to these bylaws. And actually, speaking with Mr. Kylie today, we're, we're actually going to be working tomorrow on some concepts and hopefully bring something to the committee of the whole for consideration by council, at least for a couple of amendments that we've heard just from in discussions here. So beyond that, at this point in time, you can't, you can't stop development. You can slow, you can structure development, you can put agreements in place. However, you cannot actually physically or, or processively stop a development.
Thank you. And I think one of the reasons this was brought up, because there's been a lot of questions asked, and this wasn't brought up to anything to do with any current development that's on, on the docket. It was the fact that because of some of the situations we're hearing with some of the current developments, we're hearing about things that we shouldn't even really be talking about at times because it's current things that are actually allowed, we keep hearing about. So until we actually get the MPS and LUB updated to what we want to see it, it, it just, you know, people misunderstand it and wonder why. So we were just getting a legal opinion because we've been hearing it from a lot of people. So that's what we did. So that's the answer. So does anyone else? Counselor Strong?
Wasn't there also a concern about the ability to, to service these development because of our power supply? And I think that was where I kind of jumped in on it too, but.
Through you, Chair, that's actually part of what we want to discuss is like a pre-development checklist and to be able to go through, talking about what services we have, what are the capabilities, looking at it from a heritage lens, looking at from Public Works, going, going across the board before it comes to council so that we can have questions answered like that. And to say, is this feasible? Or if it is, what's the timeline or what's the consideration for upgrades, for access, for, just so that we are all aware prior to development coming forward to councils that we're providing with the most information possible? So it's, it's about checks and balances within this process.
Any other comments? Counselor Dofne?
Being presented with options is somewhat cheerful. I don't think any of the colleagues, of my colleagues are against development. We are for development, but it has to be the right or the appropriate development for the area within the town. And as Paula said, if slowing down the process helps us make a solid decision for the entire town, so be it. I think we all have to remember in a small town as such as ours, there is no NIMBYism. Every decision that we make will affect somebody in some way, be it through walking the traffic or getting groceries or whatever it may be. There will always be a small inconvenience to somebody. The other thing is Lunenburg is unique. And despite what I have been told by some in the public, yes, we are unique. And we must consciously keep the sustainability, the growth, neighborhood values and UNESCO in mind as we work through the future drafts of the MPS, the LUB and the CPP amendments. Thanks.
You. Any other comments? Deputy Mayor?
And again, when I saw the report come through, I was really kind of searching my brain to see where this had come from. And to Counselor Strong's point, I think it, it had originated when we were talking about the shortcomings of our electric grid and the fact that, you know, in a number of situations, we were running up against that, that there was concern that there would not be capacity. And was it fair to encourage development when development was actually not going to be possible for a given period of time? And it was a move to try to signal that to future developers. Not that there was any anti-development sentiment, but that there was an understanding that there was capacity concerns. And so it, that's, I think that's important to note. And the fact that, that we have since discussed things like, you know, through our community development department, a more rigorous pre-check list process that would ensure both potential developers and ourselves as council that, that it would be a viable, whatever's being proposed is a viable option, I think is, is helpful in that regard as well. With respect to the, the fact that it had been noted by this council when we had initial strategic discussions as to what the priorities of our mandate would be. We identified the MPS and LUB or review of those very important documents as a priority, as was noted. And in looking at our, our current motion action list, there are pieces of those documents that are, have been identified as under review, but a more wholesale review of the documents and, and, you know, kind of a step-by-step review of things that have been identified by those of us who are trying to work with it, has, has not been, you know, the process for that has yet to be identified. So I think this was just one more step in that, us figuring out a path to actually highlighting or prioritizing that body of work, so.
And you, anybody else? I'd just like to highlight that, Counselor Dofne, your mic. I'd just like to highlight that we've been told as recently as today, basically, that all our circuits frankly are at capacity at this point. And it seems like we are doing upgrades, as you can all see, unless you're not driving through Newtown area. We're upgrading over two and a half million dollars with upgrades right now for some new development going up by Stelia in that area of town. Some's already open, but we're going to be changing some circuits around. And it seems like every little upgrade we need to do for any kind of growth is like $2 million is what they come back with. So again, the checklist that we're trying to put in place will eliminate what's happened in the last two to three years with the encouragement and excitement of development, only to tell people we don't have power. We're going to have wastewater, we're going, we have lots of water, but power, we have a, we have a plan that we're working on and we will have power, hopefully, over time. But currently, without that checklist, be, be quite frank, you know, it's been hard on developers and it's been hard on the community because it's basically ripped the community. You know, the Blockhouse Hill one, for example, divided the community over a project that we had no infrastructure to do. The infrastructure was $18 million. So the checklist will prevent, hopefully, things like that happening, right? So again, and I feel bad for developers that might buy a piece of land, being told, come, we want you to develop, and then told after you've started the project, oh, by the way, we have no power, right? For two and a half years. So again, this checklist and the way we're trying to change things is so it's better for everybody because it was not set up, in my opinion, properly. It was just build, 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 but you can't build out infrastructure, right? So we've been working on that. This is, the top priority is getting the infrastructure up to date, and that's what we're working on. So, you know, it's going to take time, but we are working there. Because we realize and we went to other levels of government and said, you want housing? You want economic growth? Well, you can't have housing or economic growth without electricity. That just doesn't equal up in today's society, right? So the stress of everybody getting on electric car and electric this and heat pumps, it's taken a toll on, on the utility. And, and we're basically at our capacity right now. So I just wanted to, it's no sense lying about it. Just let the community know the actual truth. But we are working on things and you'll probably see a report as early as the next couple meetings on where we're looking to proceed with our utility. So again, that's what this report and, and the whole thing is all about, to try to make it better and, and. to try to make it better and easier for everybody. So again, is there any other comments? It's just for information. We'll move on to 9.4, which is really a good news report. There's a recommendation in front of us. Is someone prepared to move that recommendation? Moved by Counselor Babino. Is there a second? You have to read it off, actually.
Right. I recommend that committee of the whole recommend that council authorize a cash grant of $500 to Theringgam Lunenburg to support their participation in the October 18th, 2025 gender melon celebration in Mississauga, Ontario, as part of the Atlantic Canada Ensemble.
Second of my counselfold. And any question? I'd just like, you go ahead.
Probably going to say the same thing. Just want to say that we've had, I've had the personal pleasure of listening to this, this drum group. And, and it's really uplifting and heartwarming to see them perform it with such skill, but also with such pride in the fact that their Theringgam Lunenburg is really a lovely, speaks well of the community of, of our community, but speaks well of our, some of our new residents. And I think it's wonderful that they are going and will be representing our community when they're there.
That's me. Yeah, basically, if you haven't heard these, these performers, you have to hear them. They're phenomenal. It's very inspiring and on a totally different note. The same group, basically, they all play on the Lunenburg cricket team. And they won recently, and that was the Atlantic Canadian Championship. Two or three weeks ago, I'm waiting to get the full information from Tom to post something. But again, it's so great to see our community grow and the diversity of our town. And, and this group has really been involved in community events. They've stepped up anytime we've asked them. They've actually come out and volunteered to play the drums of things. So again, I hope they enjoy themselves at the celebration. And there is a motion on the table. Are we prepared to, nope, Counselor Strong?
It's just my regular plug for the book Covenant of Water. It takes place in the Corolla region and it really gives great insight into what that community does for their own community. And I see it happening here too. That's, one of my new neighbors came over with some sweets for me the other day. She couldn't speak a word of English, but we connected. So Covenant of Water, excellent book. Read it.
Thank you. Is it prepared to vote? All those in favor of the grant for $500, raise your right hand. opposed, motion carries unanimous. Now we're on to 10, which is notice of motions, information requests and council reports. We can start to the left, Counselor Fullerton.
Nothing to report today.
All good here today.
Counselor Babino?
Also nothing to report.
Counselor Strong?
It may not have seemed like it the last couple of days, but we should start thinking about getting our sweaters out as the new power rate goes into effect. And there are other things that we can do. I spent a good hour today looking at the Nova Scotia Power site for things to reduce your, your waste of heat in the house. I'll give a more full report at the next council meeting, but everybody mark your calendars for the first weekend in November for the Lunenburg Lit Festival. It's the 10th one. Couple of local stars going to be here, Bryn Potty and what's his name? Our lawyer? James Macduff, who advises us on, on certain things from Meganis Cooper, who wrote a book that's apparently quite excellent. So mark your calendar and be there.
Thank you, Counselor Dofne. Deputy Mayor? I really have nothing to report except for at 9:10 tonight, go home and cheer on the Toronto Blue Jays, Canada's team. So there's no closed session items, so a motion for adjournment? Moved, vote, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for those of you that came tonight and might be our last really beautiful evening of the season. So thank you.